I call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Before we get started, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Tonight's meeting is...
Is there anybody recording this evening?
Not seeing anybody, thank you. Tonight's meeting is basically just to hear the results from the search committee of the interim town manager and to vote on it. That's all we'll be doing this evening. We will not be having public comments. We will not be having selectmen's comments. It's just strictly about this. Our next meeting will be a regularly scheduled meeting with the school committee. We'll have our public comment session. We've also addressed some questions that came up in the last couple of weeks about public comment. So there'll be more stuff posted online prior to meetings. And prior to the meeting, I will read the agenda. If you have any questions about the agenda at that time or something going on, that's the time to talk public comment, okay? Because a lot of people brought up other issues that they didn't understand, so I wanted to address that upfront, so everybody knows how we're going about that. So we're going to kick off the evening with the interim town manager search committee. So if people are involved in that, we'll step forward.
I am representing the...I am chair of the interim town manager search committee. The committee consisted of myself, Barbara Anderson, Dave Romanowski, Mary Harrington, and Robert Gunther. I'm just going to read to you our introduction letter, and then we'll talk briefly about the report. "The interim town manager search committee is pleased to present to you this evening our recommendations based upon the three candidates interviewed for the interim town manager position. A note about the committee: It was formed as a committee of seven, but with no letters of interest received for the seventh position, we agreed to move forward with six members. With a very tight timeframe we were working in, one member was unable to attend the meetings as scheduled. As such, the data before you is based upon the participation of five committee members." As you will see on the following pages, we rated the candidates in two areas: qualities and qualifications, and their responses to specific questions put forth by the committee. The committee feels that both Mr. Kubiak and Mr. Lynch would bring valuable financial skills and strong qualifications to the position. Mr. Lynch would bring additional personnel with strong accounting skills. Mr. Kubiak would bring a focus on human relations. The scores were calculated two ways: the first using five data sets from each of the five committee members; the second, discarding the highest and lowest and using the remaining three. Using the first score of the scoring method, Mr. Kubiak rated top, at the top as first. Using the second scoring method, Mr. Lynch was first. They were both very close. The committee voted three to two to recommend Mr. Lynch. Members of the committee are present tonight and would like the opportunity to share their impressions of the candidates and answer questions the board may have. Respectfully submitted, Audi LeBri Chair, Winchton Interim Town Manager Search Committee." There are two notes, and I apologize for the formatting. The two notes are: number one, Ms. Forgy indicated interest in the full-time town manager position. And number two, this almost sounds like a brain teaser: Questions interviewer number one is not necessarily qualities interviewer number one. And if you look at the candidate ranking page, you will see the interviewer scores are entered, interviewer one, two, three, four, five. And for each of the sections, for each of the candidates, the interviewer numbers were assigned randomly to the committee members. So it's not one person voting straight down the column. The first, you just, I'm not going to go over the whole thing, Mr. Kubiak. You can see his ratings on the questions and then the qualities. And then the same for Mr. Lynch, and then Ms. Forgy.
I will now open it up to your comments. I'll start with you, since you were the chair.
This was a great committee to work with. The timeframe that we had was very tight, and I appreciate the support from Town Hall to get us in and paperwork and such like that. I feel we have two very good candidates. I don't want to talk too much. I would like to let the other committee members speak.
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to start up here and then work my way to the back. Ms. Anderson?
Okay. I thought both candidates were extremely good. Would be lucky to have either one. So I want to be perfectly clear on that one. I have to lean a little bit towards Mr. Lynch for a couple of reasons. One is, or the most important reason is I think he's going to come in and maybe answer a lot of questions that we have as far as the budget, you know, and the money. He's got the experience, and he comes with somebody who is fluent in munis. And he's as interested in finding out what actually happened as we are. He's also very interested in the health insurance piece, and that meant a lot to me because the health insurance is obviously where we had a lot of difficulty. And it was for those, there was a couple of, you know, the financial aspect of it really made a difference to me, and I think on the short term, he would be probably the best candidate.
Thank you. Either one of you just want to start?
I've got the privilege of representing both myself and Robert Gunther tonight. We have differing opinions.
Everybody has opinions. You're more welcome to it.
Let me, I'll speak to my own first, and then I'll argue with myself, with Bob.
David, just a little closer to the microphone.
Okay.
Again, both candidates were very well, and they represented themselves well, and I think either one of them will get us, won't get us through the financial crisis, but will help us get through the financial crisis. And they both bring experience in that. The reason that I voted for Mr. Kubiak, and the reason I voted for Mr. Kubiak was I think he would leave us with a broader plate for the permanent town manager. He will, I believe he will, the way he said it is, he says, "First, we need to follow the money. I'll start with the assessor, go through the payables, go through the treasurer, go through the accountant, go through the Board of Selectors..." Selectmen, I'm sorry. And he also, his management style for doing that was a little bit, I feel more hands-on, working with the people that are here now and trying to find a solution through the people that are, that are working for the town of Winchton now. So that's, that's in a nutshell why, and to me, it was, it was very hard to vote one way or another. I could have very well voted for Mr. Lynch, and now I will explain why Mr. Gunther, I think, voted for Mr. Lynch. Mr. Lynch has a long history in town government. He was the town manager for Chelmsford, I believe, for 20 years, and after that, he left, and he was a town manager for the city of Lowell for over six years. And both those, both the small town, or small city of Chelmsford and the large, fourth-largest city of Massachusetts, the town of Lowell, he was very instrumental in making sure that financially those towns, excuse me, those cities stayed productive and, and not profitable, but viable, viable financially. One of the things besides his personal experience that he brings to the table is his ability to bring with him a consultant who has worked with him from the city of Chelmsford all the way through the city of Lowell, and continues to work with him on his consulting business. She has a financial accounting background, and she will work with both the accountant and the treasurer and whomever she needs to, to figure out how we move forward and develop best practices financially. What else did Bob tell me? Janet, anything else? That's good. And she, she has a munis background, yes.
And thank you very much for the opportunity to be part of the committee as well. We did have strong opinions, but I think the majority of us agree that we had two really good candidates. I was a big fan of Mr. Kubiak, Bernie Kubiak, because, for a number of reasons. First of all, he made great eye contact. He was very personable. He emphasized working with the current employees and recognizing that there was unrest here in Winchton and would create a positive forum. He emphasized that DOR has seen a lot worse and didn't make it feel as though it was a crisis for us, that this is okay, you're going to get through it. And for me, an interim town manager, sharing that felt really good. That emphasis on human relations and the people was important to me. He seemed like a small business leader rather than a big business leader. And he talked about always being accessible to each of you. At any given time, he would call. You could call him and talk to him, and how he'd been a select person and understands that the process of learning, and that meant a lot to me, that accessibility. Opposed to Mr. Lynch, that has big city experience, I mean, Chelmsford is 33,000, Lowell is 107,000 population, much bigger than Winchton. So I would see him as a big business leader, talked a lot about fiscal, had that fiscal focus, and didn't mention, he did mention some people, I'll give him credit on that, you know, on community relations, but also he didn't emphasize it as much as, and didn't make the eye contact for me, which is very important. He was kind of a, for lack of a better word, kick-ass, take names kind of guy, from my, from my opinion. And he was very specific about hours. He said 18 to 20 hours that he would be available, and then be augmented by this other individual, which is very different from that access. So, and it comes down to you, of course, making a decision on who is the best person. I think that the money and the cost of each of these individuals is going to vary as well, so that I would suggest that that's something that you take into consideration, seeing how much we get for our money and how far that money goes. And again, that is, it's an interim position, as you know, so I think the next step is going to be even more important for the person that we have in here full-time. But thank you again for the, for the opportunity to help out with the committee.
Thank you. You guys have fulfilled an important role going forward, and based on what I'm reading here and looking at the scores, you did an outstanding job, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, very briefly on that point, when it comes to moving on for a, search for a full-time town manager, speaking for myself, and I think for most of the members of this committee, we would like to get our teeth into that one as well, if the board so sees it.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a three to two vote for a recommendation for Mr. Lynch. So I'm going to read off the motion, and then I'll ask for a second, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, the third candidate, we appreciate the fact that she did come in and interview and take the time. She just, as you can see by the scores, was not what we needed, but we do want to publicly acknowledge her and thank her for, for the time and effort she put in.
Well, I'd like to thank all the candidates that came in. Understanding what they're walking into is not, with their eyes open, is more important than just walking in on the blind. So I'm going to read this off, and then I'll ask someone to make it as a motion. The motion is to conditionally appoint Mr. Lynch as interim town manager contingent upon a successful contract negotiation between Labor Council, acting town manager, and the authority given to the chairman of the board to sign a satisfactory agreement.
May I have one more reading, please?
Sure. To conditionally appoint Mr. Bernie Lynch as interim town manager contingent upon successful contract negotiations between Labor Council, acting town manager, and the authority given to the chairman of the board of selectmen to sign a satisfactory agreement. That would mean if it comes to terms as quickly as possible, I would be able to sign and get him on board.
So moved.
Can I get a second, please?
Seconded.
Any further discussion on the matter? Not seeing any. I'm going to call this as a roll call vote. Mr. Seganowicz?
Can we go back to discussion, please? Please.
Yes, you may.
I kind of wish we had a little more time to ask questions, I guess, of the committee. I feel we kind of rushed into just making this motion instead of just talking about the two candidates. Is there any way we could suspend the motion for now? Because I feel only two of the selectmen really get to ask questions.
Pleasure of the board. You okay with that?
Personally, I don't have any, you know, they gave us a recommendation. I'm comfortable with the recommendation, so I don't have any questions. But I, you know, I think everyone should be comfortable with, you know? So I'm fine.
I'm, I'm good with this, but I will give you the pleasure.
Now, as maker of the motion, do I need to...
Just ask for suspension at this time.
Ask for suspension of the motion at this time? Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair will say aye also. You may now ask some questions.
My apologies for, I guess, confusing everything, but I just definitely feel, I think it's important definitely to ask some questions. The committee did do some very hard work, and I do appreciate you all for doing that, but I definitely do think it's important. Just a few, a few things, I guess, more about, you know, both of the candidates. How do you feel, you know, which one is stronger? Definitely, has any of them, you know, dealt with a situation like this? Is, you know, any of them stronger? For example, have they dealt with a, an issue with the DOR where we've had to, you know, really deal with a financial issue?
I, we can all share our opinions on that. I think they both have worked with the Department of Revenue. Certainly, Mr. Lynch is notorious for turning the city of Lowell around, and there's, there's no doubt about that. And he does have great support for the effort that he, he did do that. Of course, their budget, I believe, is $185,000, and he started...
About $80 million.
$180 million, and he started with a deficit, if I can get the numbers right, of eight, eight million. So he did turn that around. They had no free cash, and they were able to turn it around, and then he left the city in a much better position.
Do you have something to say, Dave?
No, I, I thought it was 285 million. Was that wrong on that?
It's in the notes.
It's a large budget, we can say.
He turned it around. It was an $8 million deficit, and he turned it around.
Right. I read in the paper that, that when he left, he had 29, 29 million in reserve.
Is that right? And it was at zero before that?
Yes.
You're right. It's 285 million, and that they had a deficit of 8 million. So that's a much smaller amount than our deficit comparably.
Now, you mentioned, was it, was it Mr. Lynch that said he would bring in a second person to help as well, right? And the hours, you said, would be augmented? So you said Mr. Lynch would say, be here maybe in the morning, and then would his partner be here in the afternoon? Is that what you're saying? Or, you know, what, or would they be serving together?
What was stated to us was that Mr. Lynch would put in between 18 and 20 hours a week, and that the consultant would put in between 10 and 12 hours a week. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be at the same time totally, but there would be an overlap between the two. It wouldn't be, you know, like one person checking out and the other person checking in. There would be an overlap between.
So we wouldn't necessarily have two interim town managers. One would be, you know, sort of a financial officer, I guess we can say, right? Now, would they be working pretty much mostly with the accounting office?
The consultant would be, I say consultant. I'm not sure if I could, should say consultant or assistant, but it would be a consultant and would be working with the finances, with the accountant and others.
And he did say that that second person would be, work more at the beginning and less at the end, that second financial person.
Yeah, if I jump in. Mr. Lynch has the strong, you know, the financial background. This person is very strong in accounting. This person would, the second person would come in, work with our town accountant, the treasurer collector, the financial team, not to step on anyone's toes, but work with them to get through this, this particular period, whatever happens with munis and such. And as Mary just said, more input from her at the beginning, and then when things get a little bit smoother, less, less time from her at the end.
If I can further that, Mr. Kubiak, like most towns in, I believe, the 80s or 90s in Massachusetts, we all dipped, and I think they all dealt with the DOR, and, and that was his experience with the DOR was back in that timeframe. One of the things that he did mention to us, which I thought was, was good, he did his homework. He watched that 90-minute tape of the DOR meeting here, so he was familiar with our situation.
The media clips.
Media clips also.
That answers my, that answered my last question. I guess I was, what I was going to ask is, how familiar were the two candidates, I guess, with the situation that were going on? And I guess really, how familiar are they with, with Winchton?
Kubiak seemed to have done a lot more homework, in my opinion, in terms of understanding who Winchton is, and even just, they both, they all admitted, it was, it was a short time that we asked them, but, I mean, even, you've interviewed for jobs, I'm sure, all of you multiple times. You at least read the website. Kubiak did mention there was not a lot of information on our website, but he did go to other sources as well, and thought there was a lot of opportunity to share more information, which certainly is, is something that a lot of townspeople want. You know, I think that, like I had mentioned earlier in my, in my comment, that I think that in your negotiations, you're going to find a big difference, again, in my opinion. Maybe they're the same price, but I think that, that the favored candidate's going to cost a lot more. And since we all, since it's so close, I think that, that could be a factor.
I think, I'd like to ask a question, if I may?
May.
And on the negotiations, it will be just the chair and the acting town manager? Is that correct?
And the labor council.
And labor council.
We have a certain budget to work with, and it's not like we can just go and make up numbers willy-nilly. You have the remaining budget of the town manager and the acting, the ongoing, next year budget of the town manager. Those are the figures you're working with. You're not working with piling on, say, X amount of dollars. We have a finite budget. We have to live within that budget, and that's how it has to be.
Right. Well, that was a concern, you know, obviously.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, we have, we have a finite budget to work with. We have the rest, the funds for the rest of this year to work with. Then we have July 1, and there's a budget available for the town manager, so we have funds available to work with that with. We are not going, obviously, the whole process is to get someone in place now and look down the road for a long-term town manager. So interim town manager means interim. Doesn't mean next year, we come back and start all over again. It means let them get our house in order, let them get us up to speed, and then we'll start the search again. If I understand correctly about Mr. Lynch, we should probably be starting around November, December for our new search, to allow him to get the books closed and get a handle on what we're currently looking at. It could be sooner, but I would estimate that we have to close the books starting in July, and then the auditors have to come in. So we won't get a good picture of what our fiscal picture looks like until the books are closed, and then it gives him the time to go through all the books and see everything. Now, his, his interest in our healthcare is a big, is a big plus, because that's where a lot of our issues come from. So maybe he can track stuff down. Maybe there was money that wasn't given to us that should have been. Don't know.
Right.
So he's not going to go over budget. Let's put it this way, we have a finite budget to work with. We're not going to come back and say, well, we blew all the money in the first six months. I wouldn't believe that the board would allow that to happen. We're going to work within the budget that we have.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe that the timeframe that was discussed by most, most candidates was 90 to 120 days.
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy as a clam to have that done, but I'm realist. The books get closed in July. They start to close in July. Most of them don't get finished because all the grants don't get done until August, so then you have your second filing. By the time the auditors come in, I mean, I'm hopeful that we can be done, but I would, I would be realistic in saying, I would think by November. Now, 120 days, I'd be happy as a clam. In 60 days, we'll have a report from the new town manager, interim town manager, and he'd say, I'm, I think in 30 days, we'll be ready to rock and roll. We'll put everything back together and start again. But knowing how the books take long to close, I'm being realistic about it. That's my opinion, because I've seen how long it takes for the books to close. That would be my opinion. I could, I could absolutely be wrong, and I hope to be wrong, believe me. But I know how long it takes the books and the auditors to get done and write the report, because that will give you a better, the community, a better understanding of where we stand financially from this year going into next year. Does that make sense? Okay. So I, I would hope for 120 days, but I'm not going to hold my breath.
Now, Mr. Chair, I do believe it is per the charter as well, so it would be a 90-day appointment, and he can also be reappointed once, correct? Is that correct? So it could be 180 days, right?
Yes, max, right.
Yes. I'm still, I'm stuck on what Ms. Anderson had said. I guess the contract negotiation would be between the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the acting town manager, and the labor council. Is there a specific reason why it's only those three? Is there a reason why it's not the rest of the board as well? Is there a precedent that makes it this way?
Most contracts that I've ever, I've done superintendent contracts, and I've had the authority to do it, and I bring the board up to speed before it's signed and let you know exactly what's on it. I've had the authority to do that. Negotiated multiple contracts.
But is there a reason why the rest of us aren't there?
For expedience, because our next meeting's not till June 8th, and we're hoping to get this wrapped up this week. That would be the reason.
But it's, but there's also no reason why it couldn't also be an executive session, and the five of us could be there making the negotiation as well?
You don't want five people in the room negotiating, plus a lawyer. You want the least amount of people. What you could do is you can report back what the negotiations are and okay it, but generally speaking, the, they give, the, the board gets, gives the chairman latitude and reports back. Obviously, you know we're not going to go over budget, so we're already fiscally set, you know? So that's, that's not an issue. The issue is, is to try and get the lawyer to write the paper, the terms to be agreed to be upon and then signed. It's pretty straightforward stuff.
Okay. All right. I guess it's just, I think it definitely is, definitely one of those things. I think definitely in the past, I think the boards have been there for contract negotiations. Definitely, it probably hasn't been...
I can just add to that, because I've been involved in all of this. Normally, the town manager would work with negotiations with any department head, and then he would bring it to an executive session for affirmation of the board. There has been times where it's changed what he's negotiated or what the deal has been between the two parties, and then he would go back to the other, the party after the executive session and say, this is what the board has, has offered. So usually, it is between the town manager and the party, and then he will bring it to the board in the executive session.
Now, is, are you saying to the full board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to alleviate any conflict that it's an acting chair negotiating with an interim chair, that's why labor council's involved, and labor council's going to be doing the majority of the negotiation.
I'm not really concerned about, you know, because, you know, you're being in the room or the labor council. I guess I'm, my only concern is why the full board won't be there in the, in the negotiations. But I guess I can understand for, for the sake of being, you know, expedient and making sure we have an interim town manager as soon as possible. I guess I can understand that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I was going to go down that same road, Austin. However, I think that it's something we need to look at for when we are hiring a full-time manager, because my question was going to be, as a full board, what is our role after tonight? And that was just explained, that you would have the, you would be representing the board in these negotiations. But I would... that you would have the, you would be representing the board in these negotiations. But I would, I have kind of the same concern as Austin about the, the board not being there, but I understand the reasons why, so let's look at it for the next time.
Well, I think, I think when you go to hire a full-time manager, you, you appoint a committee to negotiate. You know, a committee out of the board, and then you bring it to the full board for review, because... I'm sorry. When you have a full, when you hire a full-time, you would put a, two-member team together to negotiate with direction from the board going forward. Like, this is what we're looking for, how many years, what the pay scale would be, and then it would, they would negotiate. That's how, we've already negotiated from the, from the point of, the subcommittee went to, with direction from the committee to the, to the negotiations, then report back if they weren't going well. If they went well, all well and good, it was done. But where we're in this, this situation, we know what we're working with fiscally, so there's not, and we know the term is 90 days. If we come back for another 90 days, it's not like we're dragging it out.
Yep.
So, you know, expedience would be the, the one reason why we would do that.
The watchword.
Correct. Okay?
Mr. Chair, may I ask one question? If the, the favored candidate cannot work within the, the offer, so then you go to the second candidate? Is that how it works?
That would be correct, if we can't come to terms.
Okay, great. Yeah, I guess I had the same concerns as negotiations. I think part of the reason that we're here is that we haven't been that good about negotiations, contract negotiations. And so I would suggest that we just look at learning from the past and maybe doing things a little bit different. In this case, because it's a fixed amount of money, I certainly see to expediate the, the, putting an interim town manager in place is important, but I do appreciate, you know, as a, as a citizen of Winchton, you looking at that process, and that it may have been broken.
Well, again, I've done this before, so with the authority of the boards, we look at the parameters that are laid out, where this is an interim position. It's not a long-term position. I would step back and say, for the full term, absolutely. You wanna go with a, a committee to negotiate. But specific directions from the board, how many years do you wanna go? What pay scale do you wanna go at? What benefits do you wanna offer? That stuff all spelled out front from the board, and you would start to take that to the candidate, and then you would work back from there. So that, that would take a little bit more time, but this is, again, an interim position. It's a fixed cost. We already know what we have to, money to spend. So it's not like we're gonna go out and write, and absorb it in contract, sorry, my arm, but absorb it in contract. But this is a quick start to get to where we need to go. So, I hope that explains it. Are you now satisfied, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify, and I'm not sure if this would make you feel better, but when, before we interviewed Mr. Lynch, I think I had some very severe reservations. I felt almost like he was kinda being pushed down our throats a little bit, and I wanted to be sure that we had the opportunity to choose who we wanted for the town. When Mr. Lynch came and interviewed, he was very confident. He was very excited about the challenge, and he managed to turn my insecurities, my negatives, into huge positives, where, you know, he, he ended up kind of edging out Mr. Kubiak to me.
Okay. Okay. So I'm gonna come back to the motion. The motion is to conditionally appoint Mr. Bernie Lynch as interim town manager contingent upon successful contract negotiations between labor council, acting town manager, with the authority given to the chairman of the board of selectmen to sign a satisfactory agreement.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
Now, this will be a roll call vote. Ms. Segenowitz?
Aye.
Audrey?
Not Mrs. LeBree.
Mrs. LeBree, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mrs. Salter?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also. Thank you. Thank you very much for your work.
You're welcome. Excellent.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Um, prior to that, if I may, so the next step is...
I will call him.
Through the chair. Will it be you, or will it be the acting town manager?
I will call him directly after this meeting to let him know what the vote was, and then we'll set up a meeting to get the ball rolling.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye at 7:10.